I turned my video on the screen so we can see all the council.
We're ready to go.
Here we go.
We're ready to start.
Are we ready to start, Shannon?
We're ready to start.
With that, I'll call the meeting to order, and we do not have a flag, so we are going to bypass the pledge tonight. And with that, Shannon, would you please take your role?
Anthony?
Here.
Borders?
Here.
Thorson?
Can we unmute Carrie? There you go. Carrie, there you are.
Thorson. Wilhelm?
Here.
Malloy?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
And I'm sorry, I had my agenda here and it disappeared. I'm gonna try again. So, thank you. Welcome to the Post Falls City Council meeting. We started the evening with a workshop, and we're now moving into our regular session. And my agenda disappeared again. We've taken role ceremonies, announcement, appointments. I did not receive any today as far as announcements, and I would request council approval for the appointment. Excuse me again, this just keeps disappearing on me. For the appointment of Scott Fink and Chris Noase to the Park and Recreation Commission to fill the positions that were held by Nelson Goley and Howard Gole.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, would you please take the role?
Thorson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Borders?
Hi.
Malloy?
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none.
Are there any declarations of conflict or exhortate contacts and site visits?
No.
Seeing none. Shelley, would you present the consent calendar, please?
Item A is minutes from the April 7th, 2020 city council meeting. It's cables March 31st through April 13th, 2020. Item C is West Side at Prairie Falls, Southern Division Construction Improvement Agreement. Item D is Professional Services Agreement with All West for Geotechnical Evaluation at Black Bay Park. Item E is Contracting J U B Engineers for Engineering Services at the Community Garden. Item Act is Engineering Services Contract with Wachcomer for the 2020 Street Rehabilitation Project. Item G is Cash and Investments Report through March 30th, 2020. And item H is Agreement with the Idaho Department of Transportation for Digital Social Photography and Planometric Mapping of Best Falls.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the consent calendar?
I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Borders?
Hi.
Malloy?
Hi.
Thorson?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Tonight, we have no public hearings, and we have no unfinished business or returning ordinances. We do have new business, and that would be the City Hall Facility Use Policy. Who is, who is, is that you, Warren, or is?
That would be John Cafferty.
Okay.
Here, let me pitch in from him. I'm not sure if he's on, so. I think he's coming on. This is fun, Zoom hearing. John, you on now?
Yes.
What the? It's up to you, John, City Hall Facility Use Policy.
There. I think I'm back on now.
Yes, we can hear you.
So, what this is, it's a policy to allow for the, you know, the video's gone, but I think you can still get the audio.
Yes.
This is a new policy to allow, and I apologize, I don't have my paperwork in front of me. I got my stuff worn. It's a allows for the internal and external use of the campus down here where it's called. It facilitates the reservation of the exterior of the building through the Parks Department, and it allows for the internal use of the building primarily for city type of business to allow that to work through the clerk to make sure we have a city stated purpose for the use of the facilities. Any questions?
The information was presented in the package. Is there any questions of John? Thank you. Do we need to take action on that, or is that, that will be down under, there it is right there. Action item, the first one on the resolution, correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
I'd move to approve the resolution, City Hall Use Policy.
Second.
Second. Well, motion second, further discussion. Shannon, would you please take the role?
Wolf?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Borders?
Hi.
Malloy?
Hi.
Thorson?
Thorson? Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is the ordinance closing the West Salties 2 Urban Renewal Area.
Move to place the ordinance closing the West Salties 2 Urban Renewal Area on its first and only, well, under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion seconds, further discussion. Shannon, please take the role.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Borders?
Hi.
Malloy?
Hi.
Thorson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls County, Idaho, reciting a brief history of the urban renewal plan and a pursuit of post falls ordinance 1089. At the termination of the West Salties 2 Urban Renewal Area, establish pursuant post falls ordinance 10089, authorizing city staff to take all steps to implement this ordinance, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, providing an effective other matters properly related.
Move to approve the ordinance, West Salties 2 Urban Renewal Area, to ask the clerk to recite the applicable number and be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Hi.
Malloy?
Hi.
Thorson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next action item is an amendment to the number, amendment number three, the Professional Service Agreement with J U B. Is that a presentation, I believe, at this point?
Yes, it is. Go, Andrew.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Andrew Arvini, Utilities Project Manager. A minute, and I will get my slide up. Okay. So my presentation this evening is on the Water Reclamation Facilities Tertiary Improvement Project. This agreement, this amendment tonight was, it with J U B engineers for the for the original design and engineering. I'll go through the slides and give an overview of what's included in this amendment. I do want to add that John Beecham, the Public Works Director and Craig Lormool, Utilities Manager, is in attendance as well. And should there be any questions specific to certain areas or portions of the presentation this evening, I may call on them to, to answer those specific questions. So, to cover the project elements, this was taken from the 2013 Facility Master Plan, and the, the key elements are identified as installing tertiary membrane filtration, upgrading the existing secondary treatment system, and then this also upgrades our existing disinfection system, the ultraviolet disinfection. Those, those key elements came out of the project goals. So what this does is it satisfies our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit Compliance or permit. That's also known as the N D D S, which you likely have heard before. So we are on a compliance schedule that we have to meet by the end of 2022. These improvements as part of this project allows us to do that. It also increases our capacity needs. So this addresses for increased flows that we are likely to see as we see continued growth in the city. Three and four are really kind of blended together in that in our design and engineering, we made the decisions based on what was in the best interest for long-term improvement. So this design, this project allows for upgrades in the future. Easy upgrades or upgrades that reduce the chances of having to complicate or go back and address these existing upgrades. A little bit of the background, in 2018, council approved the Design and Engineering Agreement with J U B Engineers. At the time, we did not include the Construction Management Services as part of that agreement. That's something that we typically do with most of our projects. However, given the magnitude and the unknowns at the time of design, we did not include that. Then that is why you are seeing it now. It allowed us to really dial in what those, what that level of services looked like and what would be required as part of this project and construction. Also, around the same time, we received confirmation for loan funding from the, from Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, and that's part of the Water Pollution Control State Revolving Fund, known as the S R F. And that amount was up to $24.1 million in, for the, that can go towards the estimated project cost. As of March, early March, when we advertised for bidding, the estimated construction cost is $40 million. Currently, we are out to bid with the bid opening date of May 14th. So, the final slide of the project background, this provides more of an illustrative overview of really where we started, and I think highlights the, the key milestones that we've accomplished over this two-year time span. The red box shows where we are today with that bid opening date of May 14th. And then we anticipate construction starting this summer, and that would continue for about 28 months. We go through 2022. I covered this in a, in a future slide, and I do mention the, the project duration, so I'll touch a little bit more on what the CMS portion includes and what that entails. This was taken from our bid set that's currently out to bid, and this really shows the high-level view. This is probably one of the more favorite ones because it provides enough detail, but enough overview that you can really see the scope and the scale of this project. Those of you that are familiar with the site, the water reclamation site, off to the left is the existing facility, the more grayed-out area of the site plan. To the right are the darker lines, and that's more or less all new construction. There's currently a vacant area in that southeast corner of our facility that will be filled in as part of this project with buildings and structures. Off of the screen would be the Streets and Fleet Department, and then to the south is I-90. So this project connects our facility to the Streets Department driveway. The key components would be the, the membrane and plate settler building, the rather, the rather large structures, and there's a lot of accompanying components that are included as part of that construction to make them operational. So this amendment this evening really covers three, the three components. I'll get into the, the first one, is this takes the task item 111 with J U B Engineers, which is for design and engineering and coordination with equipment vendors. We pre-procured two major pieces of equipment for this project, the ultraviolet disinfection equipment and the membrane filtration equipment. Specifically, the membrane filtration vendor, during the supplemental review process and design, we experienced some substantial delays in those reviews in acquiring the, the level of information that we needed for, for the design. So we exceeded that estimated project budget that J U B had in place. This balances that amount. The second part is for Construction Management Services for the construction of the tertiary improvements. This includes oversight of the project. So this takes the design and then it retains J U B as the design engineer, and that will carry into construction. They'll coordinate with the contractor. They provide the weekly meetings. There'll be some very close coordination with the city and the contractor for substantial tie-ins and shutdowns. They're also tasked with project closeout and wrapping up projects, the, the design, the as-bills, and delivering all the deliverables that have been, that have been outlined in the agreement. And then included is a contingency for the CMS. So in the event that we do encounter any unforeseen conditions or the need for additional services, this would be authorized by written approval from the Public Works Director. I'm going to step back and revisit this slide. I do want to point out, and I didn't mention this, but going back to the, the budget transfer and the cause of that with Wigan Water Technologies, so this, this will make that portion of the budget whole. And while we experience some delays and some challenges in coordinating through the design and the supplemental process, we are looking forward to construction on the big picture, sense of it all, that getting into the next phase, but specifically, we are excited to move into construction with Wigan. What we understand and what we have heard is that Wigan's strength and where their focus is, is in the assemblance and manufacture of their equipment. So we, we did encounter those difficulties and challenges during the design. However, we have all reason to believe that we will receive the product that we have specified, and that their strength is in the manufacture and coordination with the contractor and customer being the City of Post Falls. So, jump into just the overview of what we're actually asking for this evening. The Construction Management Services, the CMS portion being the largest, that is for $3,362,550. The additional services is for $192,500, and then the task 400 contingency amount is for 120,000. So the total requested amount this evening is for $3,675,050. I will point out, I, you can see the note at the bottom of the slide, the, that this amendment includes the 231,000 that has already been transferred from unused task budgets. So those are budgets that were originally budgeted and scoped for, through the course of design, J U B and the city identified that those were not needed. So we use that amount to transfer towards the additional expenses incurred with the coordination with Wigan. And then 192,500 bridges that gap. So as everyone is aware, the effects of COVID-19 and specifically what impacts this has on our project, we have been following this closely in the Utilities Division with our projects, specifically the tertiary improvements project. We have been in contact with the regulatory agencies, and the communication that we have received is that all reasonable efforts need to be made to be compliant schedules. So more or less continuous planned, and, and we have continued to do that. As we are currently out for bid, and we'll open bids on May 14th, we will continue to move as our original intention. I will note that if we do see impacts or delays related to, to COVID-19 down the road, that regardless of those delays and those impacts, we will need this, the CMS portion of, of this amendment tonight. So if, if the project sees those impacts, regardless of that, it's part of construction, we will need the construction oversight and everything that's entailed in that. So that more or less wraps up the items that's included in this amendment this evening. I do want to just highlight a couple things that will be coming soon in the next two months. We anticipate roughly June that we would be revisiting with more project-related items. That would be the bid results and the analysis following the bid opening on the 14th. And based on that, we ideally would be looking at a recommendation to award. And then, at the same time, we would also be looking to bring a contract for special inspections and testing. So with a testing firm, and the city would hold that contract separately from the construction contract and this amendment. Just a final note, this has been a several-year project, actually going back to when I started on the first phase of upgrades. So the, the impacts that, or the implications of this project from, from all angles in the involvement that everyone has had, I do want to recognize that there's been a lot of involvement, coordination, I know, a lot of discussion. I would just provide an opportunity and ask the mayor and council if it, if you are interested in hearing more information prior to seeing the bid results before we come back with a recommendation to award. If there would be an appropriate time or venue to provide additional information, if that's an interest that the council and the mayor and councilor be interested in seeing from us. So, with that, I will conclude my presentation and be open to any questions.
Andrew, I have a question for you. On the construction phase, we're, we're at nine, or 9.1% of the total cost for the management services, is that typical on a project like this?
Um, I, I think, given the, the magnitude, or the, the amount of detail, I don't know that it, that typical percentage that we see necessarily applies. But John Beecham, Craig Lormool, I invite either one of you to, to join in, maybe add any additional comment that you may have.
See if I can jump on here, because John Beecham, Public Works Director, did the real rough math, we're about 15% with design and construction oversight for J U B's involvement on the project compared with the current cost estimates. That, that's lower than what we would typically see with a smaller project. Usually, it's more like 20%. So, kind of like Andrew's saying, with this big project, it's probably a lesser total percent.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions of John or Andrew?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Al.
I just want a clarification, Andrew. This, this isn't like a miss. I guess when I first read it and it said it was an amendment, I thought, what'd we do? We missed this bid by $4 million? This is not a miss, right? This is just a process.
Correct. Correct. When we scoped the design with J U B, we received an estimate for the Construction Management Services, but that was purely an estimate. And looking back, reviewing back to when we started in 2018, we, we made a lot of decisions and really sorted through different technologies that at the time, it, it was not been our interest to include a construction management contract. So the design really informed what the services look like, and has been able to refine that and outline what we really need. So it is not a miss, and it was our intention to use the design to inform what the level of services look like.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one quick one.
Go ahead, Steve.
So, so Andrew, when we go out for bid with this, depending on the bid prices, will this dollar figure remain the same, or is there the chance of J U B coming back and asking for another amendment to this?
So this amendment, this cost for the CMS services is based on the project duration and the task items outlined in the bid documents. So it's more or less fixed on what the contractors are bidding on and what they are looking at.
Okay.
They're required to complete this within the time stated in those documents, and this Construction Management Services is a reflection of that.
So the, it's not going to be tied to the total cost of the project, and once it's done, this is going to be their management fee for the entire length of the project, then?
Correct. Based on, that is correct, and that's based on the 28 months per the contract document. If there are impacts or changes, then, then that would, in J U B's amendment, it would impact this CMS contract if there are delays beyond what is currently being presented.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
Yes.
Carrie, go ahead.
Just to clarify, the funding for this comes from?
So they're up to $24.1 million we will receive from S R F, or from I D Q, so that we have secured up to $24.1 million. The remaining is city funds.
Andrew, on that, I know that loan rate was an outstanding rate at the time. In light of what has transpired, is there a chance we visit that and see if there might be better option out there?
I would defer to John Beecham. I believe he had, he was in coordination for the original loan in completing the loan application, and he may have some additional information and could confirm that. And the, I, I think I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you, yes.
The original loan rate was 2.75%, and it is our intention to check in with I D Q and see what they're looking at with their S R F program at this point to see if there's any opportunity to reduce that. I'm, I'm not sure what the answer will be, but it is our intention.
Yeah, I, I would suggest it. I appreciate you doing that. How about any, any other questions or comments? That I would entertain a motion.
Hey, hey, just to, to circle back, the final slide and that comment, if additional information would be appreciated or of interest, we're open to that feedback as well.
Council, would you like to see some additional input on that as they, when they bring it back or prior to them bringing it back officially?
I think I've seen enough.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a huge project, right? I mean, as we move along, yeah, I want to know what's going on, but.
Okay.
Yeah, our, our next steps would be opening bids, a review of those bids, and likely a recommendation to award sometime in June.
Okay. And you'll provide that to us prior to a meeting anyway, so if we have questions, we can touch base with you prior to that. Okay. So we do need a motion tonight, correct?
Correct.
So I'd move to approve.
So I'd move to approve amendment number three to the professional services agreement with J U B engineers for the tertiary treatment facility upgrades.
Motion second for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy.
Hi.
Thorson. Anthony.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Wilhelm.
Hi.
Borders.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item up is COVID nineteen testing support letter. Is that you, Shelley?
We have a that that follows along the lines that we've seen both at the state and national level. This letter could be directed in any direction that council desires. It could be directed to the it could be directed to the Idaho, the Director of Idaho Department of Health and Welfare, Old Health District, Laura Whalen. And basically what it is asking for is the support from the city to encourage the testing of or the widespread testing of COVID nineteen. Right now, the number of tests that are being done is Linda Wilhelm, Councilor President Wilhelm indicated earlier is not at the level that is desired to open the economy back up. And so we provided this draft letter. I believe Shannon's going to read the letter into the record and then we'll open up for any questions.
Okay.
Honorable Governor, Director of Idaho Department of Health, we are writing to you today to express our support to increase the level of COVID nineteen as well as antibody testing across Idaho. There is widespread consensus that testing is vital for the tracking where the virus is and has been, and subsequently adequately preparing for it. In order to properly prepare our city to open businesses and go back to work, a statewide testing strategy is needed. We know the rate of infections has been slowed by the stay-at-home order and social distancing. What we now need is a well-thought-out testing plan, including adequate supplies for testing both symptomatic and asymptomatic individuals. This will help prevent another possibly more dramatic surge in infections. Idaho has so far mostly avoided the onslaught of COVID nineteen cases that many other states have experienced early on, thanks to the quick action by state and local governments. But the risk is far from over, and the lack of testing has the propensity to undo all the strides Idahoans have made in the last few weeks by being socially responsible. Only extensive diagnostic testing and contact tracing will enable Idaho to identify and contain outbreaks in the state. According to the COVID Tracking Project, Idaho is below the U.S. average for the number of tests completed for the coronavirus. The fact that per capita, we are the fourteenth lowest state for COVID testing in the nation is a serious concern. This lack of testing is especially alarming, given our close ties to Washington, a state that has been hit hard with the virus, but is now the second most tested state in the nation. We urge you to create a thoughtful, comprehensive testing strategy for our state in order to protect our citizens and help our communities return safely to some semblance of normalcy. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, Shannon. Comments? Linda.
I would thank Shelley for this letter, and I would be one hundred percent in favor of sending it.
Thank you. Al?
I'm I'm confused. I'm not sure. What what do we hope to gain by sending a letter to the governor? Do we feel like he's not doing the testing or we're not moving in that direction or what?
Do you want me to answer, Mayor, what I think?
Sure, go ahead.
On the last couple of calls with the mayor on the tele or with the governor on the teleconference, and he has stated in both of the last two telephone calls that he's having trouble getting the test and he doesn't have the test. So at the last, at the last meeting on the phone that we had, he said that he was going to try to start testing, I believe he said, three thousand a month, or no, three thousand a week. Well, we've been going with this for five weeks now, and we've tested seventeen thousand four forty-five. So I think just Shelley gathering all of this information from the United States websites and, you know, thrown there by just what the statistics are, if we did get the governor to maybe. I'm not really sure how to put this. Maybe go to the the hospitals. I know that the mayor spoke with John Nass last week. And, you know, for the governor to go to the hospitals, to go to the labs, and if other states can get tens of thousands of tests, and Idaho can only get seventeen thousand, I just think there might be. I I just think this might do us some good. I mean, most of the people that I talk to out here feel like, and I agree, that testing is roadway back to work. So I would be in favor.
Carrie?
My my question, not so much on the letter, because I'd be willing to affix my name to it, even though I don't agree with all of the conclusions that were drawn in it. So if you had all of these tests, who's going to be tested? Who's going to be tested that hasn't been tested?
I know that's one of the concerns when you read the information that comes from Panhandle Health and the people that they they specify who will be tested in what order. And it's somewhat limited. And that couldn't could be due to the fact that there are not that many tests available. But when you look at the information that they do provide, it it does state who will be tested.
I'll look at that because I feel fine. Do I need to go get a test? So.
Okay.
Anyways, but I'd be willing to put my signature on it.
Okay. Steve and then Al, if you have more comments, I'll come back to you. Steve?
No, I think the letter is good because I think any information we can get out on the testing. I worked all last week at the testing site over in Ironwood Place in the morning. And it's fairly simple. If you just call and get, you know, the doctor's doctor's work order or a prescription or Panhandle Health, but I'm not seeing that many people drive through, to be honest with you. So I it's it's that people don't feel they need to get tested right now, or they're just kind of waiting around. But I'm not seeing a lot of cars going through to to get tested. And it's kind of disappointing right now.
I wonder, are doctors reluctant to issue an order for?
I I don't know that. Most of them I've seen were fairly simple. They said they just called the doctor's office and explained some of the symptoms and went through the testing site. Like I said, it takes, they're in and out of there in under a minute.
Okay.
So so it's a quick process. So I think it's just more people to contact a local physician or Panhandle Health.
Linda?
Might be a little bit of confusion here. But I feel fine too, for even thinking about. But I think that if you go off, when others can talk to people there, I've talked to probably a hundred people in the last couple of weeks that have said they think they've had this, and they want the antibody test. Now, I just read the letter that Laura sent to you, Mayor, and it seems like the Idaho Department of Health disagrees with the White House doctors. The White House doctors are on that briefing every day stating that the the safest way to get America open back up is to do those antibody tests. So that's that's really what I am most concerned about is if we can figure out how many of us have had this. And if it is, I mean, nobody knows. There hasn't been enough testing to know. I guess that is, that is my point.
Okay. Carrie?
But it's still all voluntary. So if they had an abundance of tests that people aren't taking right now to find out if they have it when they have symptoms. Because I know that we talked about this before. I was really quite ill for several weeks in November and December after I returned from Paris. And a lot of symptoms were exactly as you see listed now for that, you know, but people are saying, you know, that was too early to have it. But it was unlike anything that I'd ever had, and it lasted for several weeks. And I did see my doctor twice. But yeah, so it's all voluntary to take these tests unless your doctor prescribes you to go to the testing site. I just, I'm just not, I'm not convinced, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm just not convinced that having a stockpile of tests is going to increase the voluntary participation by the public in taking one of the tests.
Okay. Al, did you have anything further? I kind of cut you off. Hang on a sec, Al. Now you're now you're unmuted. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I guess I it's a couple of things. I don't, I'm not against the letter necessarily, but it's like, are we saying that if there's not a testing strategy in place, that we don't want the economy reopened, whether the illness is or the numbers have dropped to near zero?
Shelley?
Trying to mute and unmute myself. So I think what the intention of the letter was that on these weekly meetings that we've had with the governor, he's stating that they're having difficulty getting tests from the national level because we don't have enough COVID cases diagnosed in the state of Idaho. So I guess when I was kind of writing this letter and when I had Council President Wilhelm reach out to me, it was a letter that the governor could use as he and the Department of Health and Welfare are working with the national supply chains to encourage them to bring more tests to Idaho.
So is the governor asking for this letter from us to help him?
He did not ask for it, no. It was, we thought that it was something that he could use in his endeavor to get more tests.
I guess I'd wait till he asked for a letter that said he, you know, he needs help to get the test. I don't.
Joe?
I certainly don't think the letter hurts at all. And if it's something that the governor can use, then great. I also am extremely empathetic with Alan's comment that this shouldn't be construed as being the only way to reopen the economy, as they say. I've already made my personal thoughts to the governor's office known, although with lack of reply, that I believe there are other ways to get the economy somewhat moving again, too. One would be encouraging policies that make some sense. I don't, I don't think it makes a lot of sense that, you know, small retail shops are completely closed and we're running tens of thousands of people straight through the same five stores in Cootney County. I'm not sure that that's that's really helping prevent the spread, and it's certainly hurting the economy. So I think there are other things that we could do, particularly by monitoring the capacity at the Cootney Health, which right now is below normal levels. To my knowledge, there's exactly zero COVID patients hospitalized there. Of course, that could change quickly, but as long as we have data on that, with the testing, until we test a pretty large swath of the population, we don't know how widespread this is, what the rate of symptoms per infections are, et cetera, what the hospitalization, hospitalization rate per total infections are, because we don't know what the total infections are. So the testing is certainly a key. However, in the meantime, there are a lot of people out there economically hurting, too. And I think there's a lot of ways that could be sensibly put back to work, you know, retail by appointment only, et cetera, et cetera. Even even if it may violate the social distancing, you know, six-foot rule, it appears the biggest spikes come with large crowds in in close proximity. And as long as the hotel hotel hospital levels are monitored, and we aren't seeing a lot of spikes, I think we can start opening things back up. Of course, we're at the behest of the governor at this point. But I've been encouraging the governor to to take a look at some of these things. But testing is also good. So to Al's point, we shouldn't say, hey, this is the only way, because I don't think that's all of our position. It certainly isn't mine. But sending the letter doesn't hurt.
Joe, just so you know, I think the governor is planning to move that forward even without increasing the testing at this point. He'll come out with additional information on Thursday.
Right.
Linda?
Well, I certainly don't disagree with you, Joe, at all. I'm happy to go back to work right now. I'm not that it isn't exactly one hundred percent my opinion. I'm just saying what I have heard from my constituents and what I'm hearing on national television. So that's, that's basically what I'm basing this on. I'm all for going back to business as usual, if people can be safe and we don't have a huge outbreak of infections. So we just thought this would help a little bit. That's up to you guys.
Steve? You're muted.
I'm fine with sending the letter. I don't, I don't think it hurts anything. I just think it just gives a little bit more awareness to the situation.
I'd entertain a motion. Carrie? There you go.
There you go. Make a motion to in the COVID nineteen testing support letter as written.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Shannon, would you please take the roll?
Thorson.
Hi.
Anthony.
Hi.
Wolf.
Al.
Wilhelm.
Hi.
Borders.
Hi.
Malloy.
I didn't unmute myself fast enough, but a question is, send it to who?
I was addressed to the governor and the director of the Idaho Department of Health.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item up is administrative staff reports.
We have none tonight, sir.
And followed by the citizens' issues and the stated in the last agenda and in this one and those going forward during this COVID situation, citizens' issues, written comments only, they must be submitted via email to our clerk, Shannon Howard, no later than four P M. on the date of the meeting. And I do understand, Shannon, that we have one comment that was submitted.
Yes, we do. This is from W. Scott Howard. It says, Council members and mayor, I address you today to continue to express my concern with your unconstitutional actions on March twenty-first. There is no statute or code that allows any elected official to suspend the rights enumerated in the state constitution. On March twenty-first, you held an emergency meeting without public notice. During said meeting, without public input, you voted to suspend the state constitution rights of the citizens. Additionally, you gave the mayor rights and privileges not in your power to grant. Whereas according to the state constitution, Article One, Section Ten, right of assembly, the people shall have the right to assemble in a peaceable manner, to consult for their common good, to instruct their representatives and to petition the legislature legislature for the redress of grievances. And whereas according to the state constitution, Article One, Section Twenty-One, reserved rights not impaired, this enumeration of rights shall not be construed to impair or deny the other rights retained by the people. And whereas according to Idaho Code fifty-dash-three-oh-four, preservation of the public of public health, cities may establish a board of health and prescribe its powers and duties, pass all ordinances and make all regulations necessary to preserve the public health, prevent the introduction of contagious diseases into the city, make quarantine laws for that purpose, and enforce the same within five miles of the city. And whereas according to Idaho Code fifty-six-oh-six, police powers of the mayor, the mayor shall have such jurisdiction as may be vested in him by ordinance over all places within five miles of the corporate limits of the city for the enforcement of any health or quarantine ordinances and regulation thereof, and shall have jurisdiction in all matters vested in him by ordinance except taxation within one mile of the corporate limits of said city and over such properties as may be owned by the city without the corporate limits. And whereas the COVID nineteen strain has already been introduced into the city limits at the time of the meeting, the action did not satisfy the legal requirement to prevent the introduction of contagious diseases into the city. And whereas a quarantine is a state or a place of isolation for a person or animal who may have come in contact with the contagious diseases. And whereas an entire population of the city And whereas an entire population of the city was not estimated to be infected, the statute does not apply. And whereas there is no statute that grants the right to isolate healthy individuals. And whereas Idaho Code mentions in the ordinance and above, do not grant the council or the mayor the powers to change Idaho Code. And whereas Idaho Code 50-902 states, "The passage or adoption of every ordinance and every resolution or order to enter a contract shall be by rule call of the council within, with a yea or nay of each being recorded and to pass or adopt any ordinances or such resolution or order, a majority of the council shall be required." And whereas the new chapter 8.60, entitled Emergent Powers Violates State Code, State Constitution and the Rights of Citizens of the City. And whereas Idaho Code 46-1012 prohibits the force measure language in the new chapter 8.60, it is hereby ordered by the people of the city that the council take up a resolution to revoke said code immediately and that, and that there should be a public apology for the abuse of the authority granted to the elected officials of the city and the mayor shall renounce such unconstitutional powers.
Thank you, Shannon. Appreciate the input. Next up on the agenda is mayor and council comments. And I would just like to say that, you know, it's been a very interesting time and I know you were all aware of that as well. Interesting article in the newspaper last week that said that 52% of the people locally supported the governor's actions, 48% did not. I don't know if I've ever seen anything that is so evenly balanced. So no matter what actions are taken, some will be pleased, some will not be pleased. I've received a lot of emails and called a lot of names. And you know, we're doing what we think is best for the city. Again, our, the order we issued was in place for a few days before the governor issued his order. And you know, hopefully we just get through this, I'm looking forward to hearing the governor on Thursday. Hear what his, what his plans are to get the economy back, at least going in the right direction. I anticipate that there will be some changes made. I don't believe the order will be lifted completely, but I think he's going to take steps to get people back to work in a, in a manner that he feels is safe for everyone. So I do look forward to hearing that on Thursday. I would like to thank staff for all the work you've done in, especially during these times where it's, city is providing services, business as usual, but it's delivered in a different way. Building permits remain high and things are done now via conference and Zoom and over the telephone. So I know staff has done a very good job, I know Shelley has put in a lot of time throughout this, as is Warren, so again, I appreciate your efforts and the time you devoted to this. So hopefully everybody stays healthy and we can move forward and look to come out of this and get the economy back on track. Well, council, council comments? Carrie? There you go.
I have a question, we are still under a state of emergency. Is that correct? The city of Post Falls? Didn't?
Warren?
So let me, we're, we are currently under the governor's stay at home order.
So not, we did two things on the 21st of March. And was?
Passed an ordinance and issued an order.
Prior, you said, if you step back before that, Carrie, to the council meeting before that.
Oh, yes.
Issued a declaration of emergency. That is mainly to put the city in a position to receive a distribution of the federal funds required to respond to the emergency. The, that doesn't really have any impact on the stay at home order, that really comes out of the governor's office at this point.
But are we still, is that still in effect?
It is.
What we did, so.
The emergency order so that we have the ability to access those federal response funds is still in place and will remain in place until the epidemic is over. Or the council directs us to withdraw.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not being obtuse here, I'm just saying that if this, it, are we under this emergency order? Say for the rest of 2020, because there is still federal money that we would have access to because we have the emergency order?
That I don't know, I mean, at this point, I think any, it's anyone's guess as to how long this epidemic will last. We talked a little bit earlier about our response plan, what we're hearing from the federal level is that they're planning on 18 months to 24 months before this thing is moved out. So it's anyone's guess at this point, how long this lasts.
So however long that lasts, our emergency order that we established, you know, not the, the governor's orders notwithstanding, that emergency order that we established here in the city of Post Falls remains in effect until the until, until the federal money runs out that we don't have access to.
Well, it would stay in place until either the emergency is no longer there or until the council directs us to withdraw the declaration. But I think that for folks who are watching, they need to understand that that's entirely separate from the emergency order that was issued to close bars and restaurants.
Oh, exactly, I understand that.
That lapsed, but folks at home may not understand that that was in place for about two and a half days before it was superseded by the governor's order and it was only in place for two weeks and that lapsed a week and a half, two weeks ago.
But not the emergency declaration?
That's correct.
Okay, and what I, I just need to go look that up myself, because I know I have a copy of it. Just so I will be more clear on it. So I'll do that.
Thank you.
I'll take responsibility on that, and then I have, I have one more thing that has nothing to do with COVID-19. At this meeting and at our last council meeting, names were brought forward, citizens who were being appointed to, at the last council meeting, it was Urban Renewal Agency, and then tonight it was the Parks and Rec Commission. And all three of those were filling a vacancy that people had stepped down, you know, that commissioners had stepped down and their term hadn't been over. But it occurred to me that I think it's been about, I don't know, I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna say five years and that may or may not be accurate. But I would like to encourage us to getting back to, Ron, I think it was right after you were elected mayor, that we had a process where we notified people if there was a vacancy, notified people, as in the public. And then there was a process, if they didn't have an application on file, they were invited to have one. And then, you know, with staff and, you know, one or two council members, you would interview these people before they came. And I just, I would like to encourage us to return to that, we have three people who are wonderful citizens and I appreciate their willingness to serve. But I want to make sure that we, in the process, are giving that opportunity to the general public.
Well, typically, Kim will post that on Facebook. We have applications on file where people have applied and appointments are not just made randomly, when someone has applied and their name is brought forward to me, we will typically set up interviews with the chairman of the particular committee and myself and sometimes one other person. And we'll move it forward from there, but I'm, I'm absolutely fine with anytime there's an opening coming up, having that posted, so anyone who's interested can apply.
Yeah, the more the merrier, I think. Thank you.
Any other council comments? I see none. Again, I want to thank you, everybody, the, this meeting went much better, we updated the technology and, you know, by the time we get to be experts on this, hopefully it goes away. So again, thank you, everyone, for your time, we do not need an executive session, is that correct?
That's correct.
With that, I would entertain the next motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.